I'd like to start this study session. Our fearless president is not going to be with us, so you're stuck with me this morning. Roll call, please.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Assistant Secretary Robert Oden.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President James Ferryman.
Present.
And President Michael Schaefer is excused.
Are there any, anybody in the public who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move along. Items of study. October 2017 Code Enforcement Officer Report.
Got it. Good morning, President, Vice President Ferryman and members of the board. Ed Roberts, your Code Enforcement Officer, presenting the October 2017 Code Enforcement Officer Report. For the month of October, cumulative total of five scavenging investigations that were documented. Actually, I had two where the person ran away from me. So it was a total of seven, but five that were actually contacted and spoken to.
Do we need to get you a gym membership?
I think so, sir. So, nothing really to note. Most of the folks were completely cooperative, transient folks. And there was a concentration primarily on the east side. I've been working the east side pretty much early morning hours for the scavenging. And one item to note, the location that was on Charlie Street was a... It's a, I reported this to the, my counterpart at Code Enforcement, the city of Costa Mesa, because the large amount of the scavenging is coming out of the dumpsters along Charlie Street with some of the CMSD cards being involved. So Renee is aware of that, and they'll be working that as well in conjunction. For trash container enforcement, the total came down this month. We've been averaging about 100, anywhere from 90-something to 100. I wouldn't be able to provide the board an answer as to why it came down, but it's at about 82 right now. So I'll be refocusing my efforts on the trash containers throughout the course of the next couple of months just to see if we're, if the numbers change. For the benefit of the board, I did provide a ready reference map at the back of the presentation. Should give you an added glance of where the scavenger investigations are taking place. I'm open to any questions from the Board of Directors if you have any.
Any questions? One, of the trash containers, are there repeat offenders?
Yes, sir. On occasion. There's, there's no one property that sticks out in my mind, sir, that is egregious or continuously doing it. It may be very, very sporadic. You know, I issue a notice in January and perhaps in November, December, we get a reoffense. Most folks are very good about it. And, you know, as I've always addressed the board, I try to make contact with the folks to figure out what happened. If it's vacation, healthcare issues, elderly folks, something to that effect, we try to be as sensitive as we can.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Organics tonnage report. Anyone have a question for Scott? In regards to the... It seems like it's continually going up.
Oh, God.
Compared to last year and previous months. And probably will be the same through Christmas Vacation, I would think, wouldn't you? That was good. Anything else? Questions? Okay, thank you. Move along to solid waste diversion report.
Again, thank you, Mr.
Any directors have questions? Please, staff.
Is that this chart right here? So when did we start this?
Organics chart.
Okay, okay. Okay, I didn't print that one.
So like, as of now, we don't have OCC datas at this point, but, you know, we're probably about 61% diversion at this point.
Because the last couple of months, we haven't received that OCC report, is that correct? Because we didn't get their last months either.
It is updated now.
Oh, did you? It's updated now, yeah. So it's going to be a month behind.
And when, when we got that report, what did that put us for the...
Like I said, we're at 61% right now.
With, with last months?
Yes.
That's, that's what we've been at. Do you think that we're going to get a bigger increase because of size of their facility has increased?
It is possible, yes.
Okay. Okay.
There are many more cars because there are many more parking spaces. So I expect that it will begin to trend up. And maybe there are just more cars when I go there. But my Terry also said, all of the staff say they're busier. So I don't know why it doesn't reflect it. The bigger question in my mind is, you know, our goal by 2020 is to get to 75... The state mandated goal is 75%. Scott, when? How are we going to address getting to 75%? I mean, this, this organic tonnage is not going to get us to where we thought it would. So CRNR, another trash hauler, is, you're going to have to figure out how to, you know, extract, to divert more.
It's probably more like a progressive home extension program, looking at rewarding individuals for recycling, like if there's kind of errors, when the recycling route is...
And they give cards, you know, some, something like that to encourage residents to recycle. And also, you know, maybe the, the academy might, might assist as well, the CSIS Academy, because there's a lot of people out there that still don't believe that we recycle because we commingle everything. So when more people see that we do recycle, it might get them more, okay, I get it. So they'll, they'll buy more recyclable products.
I think those are from your heart. I think eventually CRNR and this staff is going to have to figure out, you know, how, how to actually do it. You know, like put on another recycling train at, at their business or something. It, you know, if you look at the data, when I was on the Integrated Waste Management Commission, I don't think San Ana had a very good record for recycling, even though they're very aggressive in the areas you're talking about. It, what, what I think, what I'm, what I think we need to do is plant, the planning time needs to be intense pretty quickly. Because the implementation of any plan that we do, any of those three things you talked about, we have to see that they're going to kick in and have some effect.
Well, understand one thing, the 75% diversion that the, that the state is trying to, to achieve, that includes all waste streams, residential, commercial, industrial, everything. We're just focused on the residential side, and that's a goal that the board has set, to achieve 75%.
That's true.
So, so that's what we're trying, now, one thing we could do, you know, maybe not a bad idea, staff can get together with the city staff, look at their diversion on the way, on the commercial side, put it together with ours. Maybe we're already at 75% on a community, as a community-wide.
The city is about 62%.
But it'd be interesting to see what those numbers are. Put them together with our, with our data, where do we stand? You know, so...
That, that's an opportunity for, that's what I want you to begin to, you know, dissect.
Sure, sure. We, that's, that's not a bad idea, and we can, we can do that. But just understand, our, our goal is on the residential 75%. And the statewide is everything, all, all inclusive.
True.
Bob, did you know what the city's diversion rate is right now?
Well, historically, it's been in the, in the low 60s.
And how do, how are we going to meet the 75%? Is, are they...
Well, what the city will do is they'll just change an ordinance and say, the trash vendors have to meet this number.
Oh, I see. You're talking about it.
My suspicion is that's what we're going to have to do also, is, you know, change the ordinance, change the contract with CRNR to say, we need, we need 75 or 80% diversion. How are you going to do that? And they'll say, we can do that, you know, for this amount of, for this amount of cost. That's why I think we need to begin to plan, because we have projected that we're going to have to increase trash rates in the future, and this is going to be even more. If CRNR has to do it, they're not going to do it for free.
The city will do the same thing, just change their ordinance?
CRNR, yeah, you know, they have a revolving door for their, they have a consultant who's stayed with them forever. And they have a revolving door with staff.
Mr. Vice President?
Who don't, who don't get a chance to really understand the whole process. At least that's the way it was when I was on the Integrated Waste Management Commission. A different person in the city would show up about every two years. I just think, you know, time is, time is of the essence. An ounce of planning is worth a pound of prevention. And if we don't begin to dissect or plan for how we're going to meet that number, it's going to be, you know, middle of 2019 and, and, you know... Those, the trash companies know how they're going to do this. Or every one of the, every, every, every city and every agency is going to have, have to meet the 75%. Likely what will happen is, none of them will meet it. And, and the state won't do anything. But that doesn't mean we don't have a plan to try. None, hardly any of them. We've got data that shows hardly any of the cities are above 50% diversion right now.
Mr. Vice President, if I, is it all, is a very good discussion. My, my suggestion is that we'll bring back the next study session. Well, staff will reach out to the city officials, get their numbers on the commercial, industrial side. We'll put it together with ours, and then we'll see where we stand on diversion.
Yeah, they, they potentially may have more opportunity with, with the commercial people to regulate them.
Right, right, right. In the restaurants, all that stuff, you know, they, yeah, so, yeah, so let's...
Yeah, well, now we...
Next month.
Yeah, we have white bins out there that are supposed to be recycling. You know, I, I saw CRNR pick up both a white bin and a blue bin in the same truck. So, you know, I don't know what good that did.
Is that a commercial pickup?
Yes, it was at, at a restaurant, local restaurant. You know, I walk around, I, I walk a lot, and I watch.
Well, that's a good idea, though, Scott. Yeah, just to get to see what their, and maybe find out what their plan is for the future.
Oh, I, we're going to end up putting it on CRNR. If, you know...
What, what my thinking is, though, if the city, they, they take in like 60% of the trash, is that correct? Or more?
They, no.
I mean, the commercial, the commercial.
It's more like 70, they're 72%, we're about 18%.
That's what I'm saying. We'll, we have to see what their figures are.
Right.
Because we're going to combine them both for the...
Well, that's what they, that's what they do when they report to the state. So they, they, they call us, get our data, and they put a report up to the state, make sure they're, they're meeting mandates.
Okay, anything, anything else on that subject? Let's move along to Costa Mesa Network for Homeless Solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I was... But here, but just, I, I wanted him to, to share with you the, the success that this group has, has achieved. And as you might be aware, last year, we, we talked about the restrooms for, for the homeless, and we had the liaison committee, and the city was here. And that's when Rick Francis challenged me to serve on the committee, and I was very glad he did, because it's, I'm just in awe of all the achievements that they, they, that they have made, reducing the homeless population here in Costa Mesa and providing all kinds of services to, to those, to those residents. So I was hoping he can share with you some of the success stories. I can, if you want, I can try to invite him back next month, hopefully he'll remember.
I think that'd be appropriate. We, we did receive that communication from the gentleman who presented the, you know, what's, what's it called?
From Seattle?
Yeah, from...
Oh, oh, the Portland Lou, the Portland Lou?
Yeah, you know, where he gave us a picture and had a facility image on it. I thought that was effective.
Sure, sure.
And that's, that's, that's something that I think we, we need to consider down the road, is that type of facility. Of course, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit with...
We can try to tie that.
Yeah.
Maybe we can, Chair, Mr., Mr., whatever you want. Anyway, maybe we can put it on our liaison committee for December? We have a liaison committee? Or is it this month?
I, I don't... When do we have the liaison?
I don't have it yet. It must be, it must be December.
I think the last one was...
It's December 15th if we have it.
Yeah.
Maybe we can put this on, because we need to find out about the other organizations or agencies or...
Well, I can, I can report back on, on that the next item.
Yeah, the next item is, consider appropriating funds to implement the mobile restroom.
I'd rather see, you know, who, I know the city's very interested in going in with us, but we don't know about the school district yet, and we don't know about the water district.
Again, I could, I could report that out in the next, the next item.
Oh, you can?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I ask a question. Luke, do you know, Nick, about, you know, the Orange County Sheriff's taking all those homeless people off the San Ana River? And it just went down to Adams, is that correct? Because I was at a meeting, and that's what they were discussing. And it wasn't going to go into our area. Is that going to, I'd like to find out if that's going to force the homeless more back into Costa Mesa? Because it was stopping at Adams.
Oh, I thought...
So I, I didn't know if you knew that or not. I thought maybe you had some...
I don't even know. They picked, but they forced the people to come through by town, that was the news.
Right.
My understanding, they're going to Anaheim by the stadium.
That's what I heard.
But I, I thought maybe they would be, since they're stopping at Adams, they would be coming down below Adams. That was my...
Again, you know, the, again, the homeless, the Network for Homeless Solutions would know, because they're out there every day. So we can, I can bring that up on Thursday.
If you could just ask me what, if that affected us at all?
Sure, definitely.
Because I know our numbers have been going down, but it may be going back up if that happens. Okay.
Are, are they on the, on, were, were the homeless on the San Ana River Trail below Adams?
I, I don't know. But they were, the sheriffs only were going to be directed to go down to Adams Street.
Yeah.
And not any further.
They were near...
Sure they are, but...
Yeah, they were where Costco is, you know, there.
Yeah.
But then they moved them up. So they were up farther, like Fountain Valley and area. But I had heard they're going up north.
I just hope they're not forcing them down.
No, I just heard that they were going up toward Anaheim.
If you could find out from your, that committee, I'd be real happy.
Okay. Let's move along to the next item, and I think it'll clarify a few things. Consider appropriating funds to implement mobile restroom program for the Costa Mesa homeless population.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. So you might recall back in last year, the board directed staff to, to find a restroom solutions for the homeless population. And we had that discussion in the liaison committee. It kind of died down, and then it brought it back, and then the issue was brought back up again on, on September 15th here at a liaison committee. And that's when Councilman John Stevens recognized the need for restrooms for the homeless due to the closure of the restrooms at Lions Park. And he wanted to provide a hygienic and safe place for people to relieve themselves while at the same time draw people out of places where children are, i.e. the parks. So after hearing those comments, we took the initiative to, to find a possible solution. The one idea we're presenting to you today looks to be, appears to be successful in other cities like San Francisco, Miami, where they, they, you know, what's called the pit stop. Basically, all it is, is two porta potties on, on a trailer. And you can just, you can locate that, that, that pit stop anywhere strategically you want it or you need it with the homeless population. And it's not there permanently, so it doesn't, it won't attract people from other communities. Hey, there's a restroom here, let's go here. Because you can move at the different locations, you can set the hours. The, the key to that, though, my understanding, the key to the, to this, to this program is to have a paid attendant. You need someone there all the time, making sure people aren't, you know, you know, spending a long amount of hours in the restrooms. They're just, they're there for that purpose, to use the restrooms, making sure it's clean. That's, that is the key. Because without the attendant, then, then who knows what can happen inside there. Again, after, you know, you set hours, we can take the, 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 the mobile restrooms, either our yard, the city yard, where it'll be serviced, we're going to empty the toilets and also refill it with paper, and then we can take it back out the following day. The, we did share this idea to the Networks for Homeless Solutions Committee. They liked the program a lot. Again, stressed all the importance of having a paid attendant there to be successful. After that, we've been sharing this idea with the city, Mesa Water, and the school district officials. We've had a couple of meetings with them. The school district has reported back to me that they, they think this program, they believe this program will be a, a well-served program for the community. They also agree that paid attendant is vital for the success. However, they will not or cannot use any district funds for this program, because I think it's, they're restricted sometimes, so they can't use any money. I do know that the Mesa Water, they did discuss this item on a executive committee earlier this month. I think it was November 7th. It was discussed, it was on their agenda. But I did not hear back their position, if they supported it or not. I also heard back from the city not too long ago, because of the, the new dynamics there on the city council. From what I'm hearing, they might delay this a bit, because of the new dynamics that went on this past, past week. So I know Councilman Stevens was really geared to talk about this next month, but it looks like they might delay it a little bit longer. With that said, though, if you want to at least send a message or demonstrate to the city that, that we support them wholeheartedly on this type of program, you know, you, you could at least, in theory, support the program if you think it's worthwhile, and, and wait, or direct staff to come back and later this month, appropriate the money. We can, we can hold on to that money and wait till what the city says. Another suggestion is that, I, I think Director Schaefer has talked to some Sacramento officials about a program like this that wasn't very successful. I did not reach out to anyone in San Francisco, Miami, or Sacramento. If you want me to do that, I could do some more research on that and report back on their success. You know, we can do that as well. So a couple of decisions for you, for you. You know, again, you can tell me to, we'll put back with more information, talk to the city, see what they said. We can do that, so, you know, I think this is today. You can direct me to, bring this back on November 30th and approve the program. And maybe prove it in concept and wait till what the city decides to do. And then we can come back later, and if the city wants, supports it, we can come back and appropriate the money. I suggest $50,000. And, and that's, that 50,000, that is for a total cost project of $100,000 with, for the project. And that includes procuring the, the restrooms, also paying for the attendant. I think that my, my hour was 12 bucks an hour, something like that. So, and what, if this program is successful, then that's an ongoing expense that would occur. If you're okay with that, you know, I said about $32,000, I think I put in there. If it's not successful, the other option is that we could always, we would own, the city and the district would own the, the mobile restrooms, and we can rent it out to special events at a nominal fee. So, I have to answer any of your questions, see where you want to go from here.
I have a question.
Really?
Out of curiosity, if we went forward with something like this, who would be the, the head of it? In other words, would it be us, would it be the city? Who would be putting it all together and saying where the porta potties should be and so forth?
Yeah, I think that, we'd have to work that out. My, I envision the, the Network for Homeless Solutions will probably be a, a good group to decide where to put it, because they're out there every day. They know where the homeless population is. They would, they can make some suggestions on where to put the, put the mobile restrooms. As far as procuring it and acquiring the, you know, I think we can take the lead on that. We can go out to bed and, and take the lead as far as getting the, the restrooms and, and the signage. I think the, the real key issue is the staffing. Who's going to take the lead on the staffing? I think, I'm hoping maybe the, the nonprofits can take the lead on that. They can hire the staffing, we just pay, we pay them, and they can hire and, and fire, or whatever they want to do with, with, with the paid attendants. You're going to need quite a few, you figure, if, if you're going to provide this seven days a week, you know, let's say you're putting out eight hours a day, you're going to probably need two people a day. You need to work half-time. I'm, I'm thinking. So the, the staffing still needs to be hashed out with the city, but that's, that's how I envision it.
Okay. Another thing is, CSDA has something new now in the membership category. And what we're doing, and I would suggest maybe we can get together, you and I, to put a question out to the people, and they will automatically, all California agencies will respond, whether it's positive or negative, just to see what they do or if they have any kind of plans that we could reap from or whatever.
Sure, you mean like a lister? We, we, a lister where you blast out an email to those people and they just want to...
Yes.
Yeah, we, we participate in that, we have that, too.
And, and they just got out, just last week, we just put it together. And, and actually, they're waiting now to hear our response, and they'll put it out. They'll say, okay, Costa Mesa Santeria District wants to know how you feel, your relationship on porta potties, or what has happened with...
Sure.
You know, and, and they'll respond right away and would have some idea. And the other thing is, I would feel more comfortable if we had some kind of criteria on it, too. You know, in other words, who all is really involved? And what's going on? I, I'm not saying I'm not for it, it's just that I feel it's kind of, you know, iffy right now. And I don't feel we should jump into something without knowing everything of who's, who's the people in charge? Who's going to put the money in besides us?
Well, I think, I think Scott's suggestion was, may get contingent upon some other agency's participation.
Yes.
And we, we make our decision after we get more information from them. I think that's what, isn't that what you...
Yeah, I, I, my, my vision is that, you know, let's say the, the city and the CMSD go, go into this together, and, and we implement a pilot program, and, and we start surveying the businesses. Are they seeing a, a reduction in people deprecating from their businesses? Are they seeing improvements? If they're seeing improvements, maybe, then maybe we can go to the Chamber of Commerce, they can maybe, or the business can help pitch in some money for this. It's not like a whole lot, but maybe they can help, help, help pitch in. Because it is, it is a, it is a community, it is a community issue. It's not just focused on, on the city or, or us. It's really, so everyone should be involved. And so that's how I envision it. Yes, definitely, is, is other, the county has, I think I put in the, in your, your statement, the county has a lot of money for homeless. Maybe we can apply for a grant to help fund that program?
Just to say that.
Yeah.
Art, what are the costs for the two units?
I, I, I broke it down. I think it was about $26,000.
Per, per each one?
No, no, altogether. So with the trailer and with the two, two porta potties, $26,000.
Yeah, I would think that, how do we get the city to put it on their agenda for discussion?
Talk to one of the council members.
And they can just add it onto the discussion?
Yes, they just put it on there, yeah. You just talk to Council Stevens, and see when he's, I don't think he feels very comfortable putting it on right now, what, what just happened last week.
I, I don't know. You know, it's still the same five members.
Yeah.
And they still have a vote. You know, I think that it's probably going to be us and the city, probably.
Most likely, yes.
I would think that if we can ask him to put it on the agenda for, you know, letting him know that we're, we're, we'll be involved.
Yeah, it'd be helpful if you reach out to him. I mean, I can, I can reach out to Tom and, and suggest that. But I think it, if it comes from you, to, to John, to Council Stevens, he might, he might do it.
Would you be willing to do that, Tim? Absolutely. I think, I think, because we need to expedite it if we're going to do it, and at least find out what their position is.
But it's still contingent upon their, whatever their decision is. We would, we would react accordingly, you know?
Yeah, you know, you could say, hey, you know, if you, if you want to do this, we'll, we'll take it back to our board and appropriate the money. You know, we say, hey, we're ready to go, but we're waiting for you. If you want to do this, then we're with you.
So in other words, we're recommending it to, to, you know, looking into how we're handling it and who's involved?
Even though, say, say we put on our agenda for the 30th, we can still approve the amount of money, but we're not going to spend it until the program starts.
Correct.
You know, that would be my position, to put it on there for, I mean, I don't know, I haven't talked to the other members, but put it on for our, see, we will allocate $50,000 if the city does.
Correct, yes, we can do that.
And then we're not going to spend it unless they are involved with it.
You know, I think that we also need to get back to the guy who did that example for us and tell him that, that, and I think we told him this when, when we met with him, that this, this would be down the road a little bit from where we're at now. We would definitely go with the portable thing first. And then if, if things developed into that direction, then we might consider that other... And then, uh, if, if things developed into that direction, then we might consider, uh, that other approach.
Well, the way we, we, he presented it was, you know, either or, and we, we said we're not sure yet, we'll go back to.
But if you're gonna consider a, a permanent, uh, facility, that, that, that's the one I think that, after looking at a million of them.
Yeah, and you know, I think last week, I think they, they installed one in City of Monrovia, so we can always take a road trip up there, we can look at it too.
I'd like to do that.
But yeah, I, I, I believe that's, those kind of restaurants, the way of the future for, for park restrooms, you know, because of the, the safety issue.
We shouldn't leave him hanging out there, and, and let's have some communication with him.
I'd like to see, uh, how Director Eaton feels on that too.
Well, I think it's an absolute need, um, you know, and, and it's evolving from, you know, some of the concepts that maybe Jim put forward earlier. Um, I just can't imagine, um, a mobile restroom. You know, so Thursday, you know, I wait to go to the bathroom on Thursday and it shows up from nine till two or whatever. It, it, it is, it's a critical need, it's becoming more critical with, um, you know, the hepatitis problems. I support continuing to, to, to think through the issue, because I, I think we've evolved from, you know, the permanent one to, uh, trying to understand how the permanent one might affect the homeless community. Uh, the big fear is it'll be a magnet. Uh, you know, so they've, they've had home, they've had permanent, uh, restrooms in Lions Park forever. And, you know, they, they didn't understand the problems that they, that that created. Uh, you know, so they abandoned them, they closed them. Uh, and you know, now, now we've evolved to a smaller, you know, smaller rest, smaller potentially permanent restroom that would take care of some of the problems that, um, were created by the bigger, bigger ones. Now, I think we're headed in the right direction. Um, the city spends a million dollars a year on homeless, homeless issues. Um, I think with the specter of hepatitis, it, it's critical, you know, that we come up with something. The, um, I, I would think the overseer of this would have to be the, you know, the city's homeless task force. No, I, I, yeah, but we, we, we're just gonna keep talking. I, I just cannot fathom how a mobile restroom, and I, you know, I've read the reports on the cities that put it out, you know, they find that there's twenty thousand uses in a particular mobile restroom. That is wonderful. Um, but, you know, one showing up at a park someplace.
Not consistently.
Yeah, not consistently. It, it's just extraordinary, you know, if my bathroom, if I had to chase around a bathroom.
Well, well, we, what, that would be the decision, they could, they could be left there for like a six-month period, you know, it doesn't have to be moved. We're just looking at if it's gonna help solve the problem.
Yeah, well, when you, when, when, when we were in Monterey at the CSDA conference, they had stationed portable potties two blocks away from the hotel we were and then down by the wharf. And, you know, I'm, my, I believe that temporarily porta potties permanently stationed at, at some location. It's just another step beyond what the, you know, one, one's being dragged around on a hay, you know, hay truck.
But this is just be a trial thing to see if it's been, being effective or not.
Yeah.
They could go, we could go the next step after that.
Well, I'm, I'm all in favor of doing something.
That's, that's my point.
Well, as mentioned before, the chamber, the business community, the county with a, with a grant available maybe, and nonprofits are a part of this solution, and we've gotta, uh, interface with them and get them to, to buy in or play some kind of role in this whole thing, in my opinion.
You know, I would still like to see Bill Nelson try to come to one of our meetings, because he is, he, he's absolutely great. He can explain things, I mean, he knows everything to dealing with the homeless. And I went to his workshop that time, and he's just outstanding as far as talking to and finding out about something like this that we should be involved in.
Good idea. Well, maybe we can get him at, at, at our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll remind him again. I, I, you know, I'm surprised he's not here, I remind him twice.
Right.
So, I don't know, well, I'll, I'll see you on Thursday.
Okay.
The mobile restrooms are definitely of lesser cost, substantially lesser cost, and there's still a bathroom. They're just a spiffed-up porta potty on wheels.
Okay, anything else on that subject? Let's move along.
I'd like to have some direction, um, my, my, I'd like some direction, what, what do you want us to do?
I propose that you bring it to the board on the next meeting on the thirtieth, to see if we're willing to put in fifty thousand dollars. Because we're not gonna vote on that today.
No, I just, you wanna do that, uh, direction?
Then, then, that'll be on the record that we're, we're willing to participate, and then we'll see if the city's gonna join in.
I like our part that we're going to recommend this and let it keep going.
Contingent upon the city's.
Yes, I think it's perfect.
You know, and what I'll do is, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to some of those cities on the pit stops and try to get some more information back from you two as well.
Right.
So, everybody agreed upon? You have your?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's move along. Um, recycling, holiday fats, oils, and grease.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, I'm gonna turn this over to Gina Terriano.
This is the board. Um, since the holidays are approaching, staff would like to provide a brief reminder to the public and to the board that any leftover cooking oil or grease from your holiday cooking can be brought to the Orange Coast College Recycling Center for recycling. It's important not to pour cooking oil or grease down the drain after use, because it can cause blockages or severe damages to, um, lateral sewer lines and to the district line. And so, uh, if you have any minimal cooking oil left over after cooking, it can be, uh, soaked up with a paper towel and placed in your organics cart. Or if anyone plans to deep fry their turkey this year or use any substantial amount of cooking oil, it can be cooled down and then placed into, um, a sturdy container like a milk jug and taken to the recycling center. I did include some photos, just so you can see how people typically bring it to the recycling center. Um, the staff there, um, collects the container and pours it into the vats for, uh, residents. And just for some background, the cooking oil is collected, uh, from OCC, from a company based in Orange called AAA Pumping and Jetting. And last year, two thousand sixteen, they collected a total of seven hundred and fifteen gallons of cooking oil. And this year so far, they've collected six hundred and seventy-five gallons from OCC. Um, and after it's collected, it's recycled into products like soap and candles and makeup. Um, I should also point out that the oil and grease recycling is available all year round. It's just that it's particularly popular around holiday season, since everybody's doing a lot of cooking for the holidays. And that's.
Does OCC still have that banner that they had there? Is it still in?
I don't believe so. I think with the renovation, because it's not in the public area.
Do, do we pay for that or do they pay for that? No, no, the banner that's, A, we, we take, we gotta make sure that they have one. I mean, like Gina says, I haven't seen it when I haven't driven by it. And I'm not sure where they have their barrel now too.
It's behind the collection area, so that's why, um, the staff takes it and, and pours it in.
I was hoping you could double-check with them and get a banner ready, even though it's next week is Thanksgiving, but.
Yeah, I can reach out to them.
Did we put anything in our newsletter on this?
Yeah, it was in the Fall Newsletter.
Okay, great.
Um, I, I would, I, I go along with Art. I think if they don't have the banner, uh, you know, there's simple yard signage stuff. There's so many more cars going through there, although they're not dropping off any more stuff. There's so many cars, so many more cars going through there, they just need to be reminded. Um, I, I don't know if it's available to us, but, um, the school district has a, um, a website that goes out to all the teachers that, I think it's called Peachtree or Peach something or other.
R, yeah.
And it might be, uh, if, if, if the, um, if the children, children could be reminded, they might remind the parents, you know. I think we oughta continue to look for better, you know, additional ways, not necessarily better, but additional ways to advertise the program. But I, I've seen it in a couple of places recently, and maybe, maybe it was the newsletter. Um, I just can't imagine that, you know, that, that Mike Carey would've taken down that sign and not kept it.
You know, but they collect oil all year round, it should be in plain sight now, especially for next week. And then I think Newport Mesa, don't they have a, a, a system where they can send out information?
Yeah, it's called, it's called the Peach something or other.
Is that a phone call or just a?
No, well, it's a, it's a, um, something that goes to all the teachers.
Be a email. I can submit when you have it.
If you could, if you could, maybe they.
It's a, it's a, yeah.
If they could submit, you know, put that in there for next week, you know, just.
Okay, any other comments or suggestions, questions? Okay, if not, um, oral communications and director comments.
Do you have to chat or anything, or like to share?
I do. Um, I was wondering if we could, um, decide on if we're gonna have a Christmas, uh, holiday party. And, um, actually, we, you know, we could do it on a Friday. I think that's what we've done before in the past.
I don't think it's been on a Friday.
Yeah. And, um, so in December, actually, we're looking at, um, December first, that's pretty soon.
That'd be tough.
That's beside some math, let's see, what else? Oh, there's December, December eighth, which is a Friday. I don't know how that is for you, and you have to, you know, if you wanna do a Christmas.
Are you sure it's been on a Friday? I thought it's been like in the middle of the week prior to this. It's been like in a Wednesday.
Wonder.
But, um, yeah, have you checked on those dates? Because Friday's a little tough right now.
I would check on anything, because I wanna make sure that we want this, and if we're all agreeable, uh, I know Mike says, oh, I should get out first, uh, so, um, it could be, uh, whatever we wanna do, uh, it could be the sixth. If it's a Wednesday, or we can, uh, go to the seventh, a Thursday.
Oh.
Whatever works for all the.
I mean, it, it's better for me on a Tu, Wednesday or Thursday than it would be on a Friday.
Yeah, this is now.
Yeah, that's good, Wednesday or Thursday, is it?
Well, the seventh and the fourteenth, um, I, I couldn't do it. And the twenty-first is, I think the twenty-first is the December board meeting, our board meeting.
So it's that, are those Thursdays you're talking about, Bob?
Yes, and Wednesdays, uh, Orange County Sand District has two meetings and I'll be in Iowa on the thirteenth. But that doesn't mean you can't have it on the thirteenth.
So you have the seventh and the fourteenth.
The twentieth, you're talking about, Bob, you're in San Antonio.
Yes, but that's Orange County Sand District's board meeting.
And all that, so.
What Wednesday are you in town, Bob?
Well, um, I'm probably not available any Wednesday, but have, decide on a time and have it. Every conflict.
When's your Orange County Sand District meeting, the twentieth?
Well, yeah, and this, I go to the admin, I think it's, I think it's been moved to the twentieth because of the holidays. They, they wouldn't wanna have it in the middle of the holidays. I've, at least I've got it on the twentieth on my calendar, I don't know where I got that.
Or you could do it for thirteen, a Wednesday.
Well, I have to teleconference in, I'll be in Iowa. Um, I could sing you a song or tell you a joke and.
Well, maybe, what about the, uh, twenties, back to the twenties, is that a Wednesday? The Wednesday.
Well, Jim and, Jim and I will be at Orange County Sand District Board.
On a Monday.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Yeah, Mon, Monday would be. Like the eleventh? Are you, are you in town, Bob, on the eleventh?
I'm in town, I have training that night, I could skip the training.
Especially if you're the eleventh, it'd be.
On a Monday. How about Tuesday, the twelfth?
Okay.
Yes, that, that, that.
Is that the first, first Tuesday? I don't think it's the first Tuesday, so we're okay.
No, it's the second Tuesday, twelfth.
Yeah, so that'd be okay, because we meet the first and third.
Yeah.
Now, we have, what's the Mesa Sand District?
It's at nine in the morning.
Eight through, oh, yeah. About, are you in town, Bob, on the twelfth?
Yeah.
Or do you know you're in town?
And that, you, that, then, then I'd go to Iowa, all fattened up.
You could, because you're on the agenda there, to speak or perform.
Where?
Okay, December twelfth good?
Well, that sounds good. Okay, but I, I'll do a check on it.
Tend, tend to be in the evening, I mean, for supper.
Yeah.
And I'll talk to the place that we'll have it at, and I guess that's, yeah, sounds good, thank you on that.
Luke, we're talking about, it's the board and people that we know we invite to attend.
Luke, Luke won't be invited.
He's been helping us out.
But he could, he could show up.
There'll be no brownout violations, trust us. Scott's set fit in your calendar.
Then the other thing was actually South Coast Plaza.
What, I didn't see that. Well, I mean, I, I saw it, but what does it say?
Oh, it's for, uh, December fourteenth, and it's this tree lighting ceremony. It's not for December, I just was learning the name about it.
Well, they burned that tree down last year.
Everybody's on.
Yeah, God, I just haven't looked at it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think you're right.
So, December twelfth, it would be at six or seven?
Probably six. No, because that gives people enough time for work.
Okay.
Well, Shelley, you'd, you'd be invited to that.
Any other, uh, comments or questions, uh?
Observations? Does Shelley have anything to say? Does Shelley have anything to say, considering?
Shelley, do you have anything to share with us? If not, uh, this meeting is now adjourned.